State of Louisiana, the Honorable John Bell Edwards.
Thank you. Before I begin, I received the very sad news this morning that Richard I U Senior has passed away. Among his many accolades, he served as a DA for Calhoun Parish and then as a State Attorney General from 1992 to 2004. And when I became Governor in 2016, I was pleased to appoint him as Commissioner of Conservation, and he served in that role ever since. If you knew Richard, he was a genuine and kind-hearted man, so please keep him, his wife Caprice, and their family in your prayers, and if you would, please now join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Speaker, Mr. President, members of the legislature, distinguished guests, and my fellow Louisianans. This is the eighth time I've delivered the State of the State address. This well is where I asked you to work with me to fix our budget. It's where I announced the first case of COVID, and it's where I've talked about the immense progress that we've made despite great challenges. I look around this room and I see friends as well as colleagues. Some of y'all I worked with as a legislator, others I've come to know as Governor. But what I know from the relationships we forged and the negotiations that we've had is that each and every one of us wants the same outcome, a better, stronger, and more prosperous Louisiana. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank some of the many folks who have helped us move Louisiana forward during my two terms as Governor. First and foremost, I wouldn't be here today without my family. And so to my children Samantha Bell and Sarah Ellen and John Miller, I know it has not been easy having a dad constantly in the public eye, but each of you has handled the scrutiny with so much grace and courage. You inspire me. My goal has always been to achieve a better Louisiana, and you have been at the forefront of my mind in every decision that I've made as Governor. And to the love of my life, and the greatest First Lady, in my purely objective opinion now, in the history of our state, Donna, you are not only my biggest supporter, you are not only my biggest supporter, my prayer partner, you're my best friend. And I thank you for always standing by my side, using your role to champion children and families across our state, and the work that you have done to bring awareness to and the prevention of human trafficking, to support foster care and adoptions, and to promote music, art, and movement education in our schools, has already had a profound impact on our state and will continue to do so for many years to come. And I thank you, and I love you. To my Chief of Staff, Mark Cooper, Commissioner Jay Darden, my staff cabinet members, folks from both sides of the aisle who've worked with me in good faith, and the countless others I wish I had time to mention, Louisiana is a better place because of your service, and I thank you. You may remember back in my first inaugural address, I promised there was no challenge we would not meet. Little did we know how often that statement would be tested. It took a whole lot more gumbo and gumption than we expected, but we have met every challenge. From the record budget deficit we inherited to the floods of 2016, to the national reckoning over racial injustice and discriminatory policing, from multiple hurricanes, including the two strongest to ever hit our state, Laura and Ida, to tornadoes, and a once a-century pandemic, and many other challenges. And we may have been weary at times, but we have never wavered. Promises were made, promises were kept, and progress has been delivered. While this is my final year, my second term as Governor of the great state of Louisiana, our work is far from over. So in telling the story of how far we've come, I also want to outline priorities for this legislative session that will allow us to leave an even stronger and an even better Louisiana for generations to come. Let's go back to the very beginning. When I took office in 2016, the state had a $1 billion budget deficit to close out that fiscal year and a $2 billion budget deficit for the following year. Those of you who are lucky enough to be here, you know, it took numerous special sessions and a lot of bipartisanship and hard work, but we were able to navigate a balanced approach with no gimmicks and no one-time money spent on recurring expenditures. Oh, and by the way, not only was football not canceled, but the Tigers went on to win a national championship and a Heisman Trophy. And for good measure, the Lady Tigers just won a national championship, the first basketball national championship in LSU history. And ever since my administration was fully responsible for the budget, that was in fiscal year 17, we've run surpluses. Because of those surpluses, the state's rainy day fund will be the healthiest it has ever been. Added to the revenue stabilization fund that was created in my first year as Governor, we will start next fiscal year with more than $2 billion available for future shortfalls and emergencies. So take just a moment and think about that. We came in facing a $2 billion deficit, and we will be leaving more than $2 billion in the bank for the next Governor and Legislature. We are leaving the state in a much better posture than when I came into office, and that is a promise I made and a promise that together we've kept. Surpluses are also essential to our ability to meet inflationary demands on capital projects that you've already approved, and also to meet our match obligations under the bipartisan infrastructure law. The state also used available dollars to pursue a number of fiscal initiatives that will pay long-term dividends by eliminating debt, including paying $800 million in cash towards the Hurricane Storm Damage Risk Reduction System that will by itself save the state more than $1.4 billion. Our responsible budgeting, strategic investments, and record deposits into the rainy day and revenue stabilization funds will give the next Governor and Legislature opportunities and stabilities that we did not have in 2016. Further, there'll be another fiscal session in 2025 before any revenue loss should happen, and in plenty of time to make any necessary budget and revenue adjustments. But right now, we simply cannot squander the opportunity that we have to continue critical generational investments, something that would have seemed incomprehensible eight years ago. And let's start with the foundation for everything else I'm going to talk about today. Education. We've gone from a state that was disinvesting in higher education more than anywhere else in the country to a state making historic investments in higher education. We are fully funding TOPPS, we've increased Go Grant Dollars, we're dedicating money this year to address deferred maintenance and important safety enhancements on our campuses because every student should have the opportunity to receive a high-quality degree or credential right here in Louisiana, and they deserve to feel safe and to be safe when they're on campus. Through increased formula funding and new initiatives targeting critical workforce shortages and opportunities, we are in Louisiana creating a world-class workforce. And I urge you, let's champion research and academics in addition to honoring our champions. Let's also honor our service members who are pursuing an education. We've had ample reason to call on the brave men and women of the National Guard since 2016. Many of our service members are in college, choosing to sacrifice their free time outside of the classroom to serve our state. One of the service members in the Color Guard today here with us is Technical Sergeant Shanoa Jones. She comes from Aurora. She's also a student at Southern University at New Orleans. And Shanoa, I want to thank you for your service. I also want to thank the others who are serving, but for those service members who are bettering themselves through higher education, the state currently provides a tuition waiver, but they're still burdened with the fees charged on top of tuition. It is time to waive those fees. They deserve it, so please, for Shanoa and everyone in her situation, let's do that this year by supporting legislation that will be offered to end those fees on our National Guard men and women. Shanoa, please stand and be recognized. Thank you, Shanoa. One of the most important things I'm going to ask of you this session is to give our teachers a $3,000 pay raise, as well as a $1,500 increase in pay to support workers. We've been taking small bites at the apple for the past five years with teacher pay raises totaling $3,300. Because of the hard work we've all put in, we can nearly double that now. We have a shortage of teachers. There are not enough students enrolled in our Colleges of Education, and we are in a fierce competition with neighboring states to keep the teachers that we have. Teachers like Haley Staples, who is here today with us. She's taught for 19 years since she teaches English Language Arts at Weston High School. Haley is currently the 2022-23 Jackson Parish High School Teacher of the Year. And also here today is Angela Batiste, who was nominated for Outstanding Support Person of the Year. In her 18 years of employment at Catherine Drexel Elementary in Broussard, her colleagues have praised her vital role in maintaining a positive school culture and promoting student success. Haley and Angela, would you please stand and be recognized? And as y'all know, they are just two examples of educational professionals who've gone above and beyond for our kids, and they deserve the raise that I'm talking about. But the people in our state who deserve that raise the most are our children. And speaking of our children, as for early childhood education, I am proposing that we make the largest new investment of State General Fund in early childhood education in state history. But there's even more that we can do to reach children where they are. Through both our budget and legislation, we're seeking to create a partnership framework for Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, which would make children age 0 to 5 in every zip code of the state eligible to receive one free book per month. Representative Schlegel's bill last year for children enrolled in school is a great start, but there's even more that we can do to strengthen early childhood literacy. And in addition to education, I believe access to health care is fundamental to improving quality of life and saving lives in our state. As you know, my first act as Governor was to expand Medicaid to the working poor, and I've said it before and I'll say it again today, the easiest big decision I've made as Governor. Now more than 500,000 working Louisianans, our brothers and sisters have access to health care who otherwise wouldn't. In 2015, 22.7% of working-age adults in Louisiana did not have health insurance. As a result of Medicaid expansion, in 2022, the uninsured rate among adults fell to 9.4% below the national average of 10.2%. And it's important that we all remember that every one of more than our 500,000 Medicaid expansion beneficiaries has a story, like Monica Miller from Metairie. Monica is very active in her community. Her mother was a civil rights activist, but she also has several health care challenges, including heart issues. But because of expansion, she finally has a doctor that she loves, and she's getting the care that she needs. And then there's Maggie Aretha, who in 2018 was working as a preschool teacher when she developed an infection in her colon following a routine procedure. She was in constant pain, unable to perform simple tasks. She had to rely on friends to get her to treatment three to four times a week. Thankfully, Maggie was covered by Medicaid expansion, which allowed her to get support and a series of surgeries to correct the core issue. And I'm happy to share that Maggie is better and back to her old life of serving others. Monica and Maggie are here with us, and I ask them to please stand and be recognized. Medicaid expansion is making a positive difference for so many people and their families across our state. And unlike some of our neighboring states that didn't expand Medicaid, we haven't had a single rural hospital closure in our state, not one. Medicaid expansion has truly been a blessing, and it also helps us fix our budget mess, too. I know you may have seen reports of the eligibility renewal process that's coming up. Trust me, we're going to work very hard to keep every eligible Medicaid recipient on their health care coverage. And if you're listening to this speech and you are a Medicaid member, please make sure that we have your current contact information on file and keep an eye out for communication from Louisiana Medicaid, your health care provider, or the Louisiana Department of Health. We all know that employees need a healthy population to have a productive workforce, and we've been putting more people to work than ever before. In January 2016, when I took office, Louisiana's unemployment rate was 5.9%. At the height of the COVID-19 pandemic in December of 2020, it was 7.2%. Today, our unemployment rate is 3.6%. That's better than our southern neighbors in Mississippi and Kentucky. It's better than big wealthy states like California, New York, and Illinois. And yes, it's better than Texas. Another thing we can attribute to getting more people back to work is growing and diversifying our economy. Since 2016, the state has participated in more than 340 economic development projects representing more than $106 billion in projected capital investment across our state. That amounts to more than 70,000 direct and indirect jobs. Louisiana's manufacturing jobs, considered the gold standard indicator of economic health, ended 2022 at the highest level in seven years. And we've done all of that while reforming the ITEP to make it a jobs program, one that gives local officials a say over whether their property tax dollars are exempted or not. Our ITEP reforms have resulted in more than $700 million additional dollars going to local governments to fund roads and schools and law enforcement. And I know that no one in this chamber is in favor of defunding the police or local government or our public school systems, but that's exactly what will happen if our ITEP reforms are undone. And despite the gloom and doom projections by some corporate lobbyists, investment in ITEP projects has more than doubled following the reforms that I just mentioned. Of course, you can't land these types of economic development projects without also making a commitment to infrastructure like roads, bridges, ports. To date, and with your help, my administration has allocated nearly $5.5 billion to more than 2,000 infrastructure projects around the state, including nearly 7,000 miles of road improvements. In order to bring long-awaited projects to fruition, we have utilized innovative mechanisms like Garvey bonds, public-private partnerships, and fast lane grants. Last year, we received $97.8 million in redistributed federal funds that other states had failed to use. That was the largest amount in our history. And Louisiana is set to receive approximately $1 billion over the course of five years through the Bridge Formula Program as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law. Simply put, we have actively fought for and received every dollar available to us for infrastructure and then some. Another way that we can improve our workforce is by ensuring that every person in Louisiana has access to high-speed internet. And when we do, we're going to improve health care and education and quality of life. And we committed to close the digital divide by 2029, and we are well on our way to accomplishing that goal. We've already put $177 million of ARPA funding to work and partnered with private internet providers to invest more than $300 million to expand broadband to 80,000 unserved addresses all across our state. And we're leading America in broadband expansion, and we will get more than $1 billion from the bipartisan infrastructure law to fund more gumbo grants to complete the work. Another quality of life issue. Thank you. Another quality of life issue is ensuring that our sportsman's paradise is preserved for years to come. I'm extremely proud of the way we've progressed in coastal protection and restoration despite the setbacks of multiple storms. During this administration, CPRA has completed projects that have been envisioned for decades. We have more projects in the works now than ever before, including many of the largest and most important projects in the Coastal Master Plan, and that Coastal Master Plan is up this year. And I am encouraging, as you always do, to get behind that plan in a very large bipartisan majority. Let's keep our progress along the coast. But the work we're putting into restoring the coast will not be nearly as impactful if we ignore climate change. Like many of you, I grew up hunting and fishing. I spent much of my time down in the Man Shack Swamp, and I've seen with my own eyes the changes that have happened over time. None more alarming than what we've experienced the past few years. Storms are getting stronger and more frequent. I don't think anyone in this room can deny that. That is why we established the Climate Initiatives Task Force to achieve net-zero carbon emissions by 2050. I spoke earlier about diversifying the economy. Our All of the Above approach, that strategy, has driven new energy investment while continuing to support companies meeting the current market demand for oil and gas. And the result, Louisiana is a global leader in the energy transition. I've already spoken about the hardships, hurricanes, and crises we faced in my time as Governor. Our small business owners, as you all know, have been hit very hard by those challenges, but they've also shown tremendous strength. Today, I'm honored to be joined, we are honored to be joined, by Nick Proudie, the owner of Pat's of Henderson and Lake Charles. And I'm going to ask Nick now to stand and be recognized. After having his business shut down by COVID-19 in early 2020, Nick's restaurant took very heavy damage during Hurricanes Laura and Delta. You may remember that Nick was one of my guests at this beach last year. Like so many victims of hurricanes, Laura, Delta, and Ida, he spent months stuck in insurance purgatory while his insurer tried to wear him down and make him quit on a business that means everything to his family and to his community and to the workers there. But Nick refused to give up. He fought through adversity, and I'm excited to share with all of you that Pat's of Henderson is back, it is open for business once again. Nick was kind enough to invite me and the Southwest Louisiana Legislative Delegation for lunch a few weeks ago. The food, the service were sensational, and the rebuilt restaurant is absolutely beautiful. So thank you so much, Nick, and congratulations to you. But Nick's ordeal highlights what we all, I think, realize is happening. We're facing an insurance crisis following those hurricanes and the collateral damage of the collapse of Florida's insurance market. I'm ready and willing to work with anyone to address availability and price concerns on our insurance market, just as I did during the special session earlier this year. But to be clear, the solution to our insurance issues is not to make it impossible for hurricane victims like Nick to be made whole after a storm, or to make it even easier for insurers to wear our people down. Down that path lies unbearable suffering, increased population loss, and worse. I will be supporting legislation this session that aims to lower insurance rates for our policyholders and make the claims process easier, more transparent, and fairer for everyone. I'm open to upgrading our building codes and will include funding in the budget to help Louisianans fortify their roofs, which will make homes more resistant to storm damage, but I'll also be working to make sure that when a homeowner has fortified their roof, they will get the lower insurance premium that they're entitled to. And finally today, I want to discuss a series of bills that are core to my deeply held beliefs as a person of faith. This will come as no shock to you since I've been fighting for it every year, but I'm again calling for a minimum wage increase this year. Thank you, Senator. I find it embarrassing and frankly immoral that we have not raised our minimum wage, even more so now because of the impact of inflation. More than 20 states raised their minimum wage on January 1st of this year, and that doesn't count the many that did so in the years prior, and many states have done it multiple times. You know where I was and what I was doing the last time Congress raised the minimum wage, and by the way, they raised it to $7 and 1/4 an hour in 2009. That's what it still is here in Louisiana. The day I was sitting at a desk right back there as a freshman legislator. So that's why I'm supporting Senator Gary Carter and Representative Ed Lourdesane's Minimum Wage Increase Bills, and I urge you to do that as well. And in the meantime, I'll use my executive power to raise the minimum pay for state employees so that they're not paid any less than $10 an hour, which is the first step in the two bills that I just mentioned. And yes, that raise is reflected in my budget. One thing I hope we can all agree on is that Louisiana is a pro-life state. I know that that's something I'm proud of. I know that you are as well, but we have to ask ourselves, what does that mean? Do the policies that we've enacted support the position that we've taken? Do we truly support families? What does it mean if we let mothers and fathers work full-time without being able to afford to feed and house their children? It's time to make it possible for mothers and fathers to care for their children without risking bankruptcy. Therefore, this session, I will be supporting paid family medical leave legislation authored by Representatives Amy Freeman and Sam Jenkins. And research shows what we all know, that paid family leave means families are more likely to attend regular medical checkups and have fewer health problems. Another important way we can help families and children thrive is by closing the deplorable gender pay gap. No woman should make a fraction of what her male counterparts do. That pay gap perpetuates poverty. Our largest in the nation pay gap perpetuates poverty, and our children and our communities suffer as a result. And so I will once again support equal pay legislation. And I know that you've not yet seen fit to act on this request. As someone who's had some success in political campaigns, I'll offer this advice. Equal pay is extremely popular with voters, and women vote more often than men. So if you won't support it because it's the right thing to do, support it because it's what your voters want you to do. I also know a pro-life position can include basic empathy for women who are victims of rape and incest. And quite frankly, I simply don't know how we as a state can tell a young girl or any victim of rape or incest that she must be forced by law to carry her rapist's baby to term regardless of the impact on her own physical or mental health, the wishes of her parents, or the medical judgment of her physician. After all, rape and incest exceptions... After all, rape and incest exceptions protect crime victims. I say this as someone who, as you know, has a very well-documented pro-life record, but I urge you to add rape and incest exceptions to our abortion ban here in Louisiana. This is overwhelmingly supported by the people across our state and people of deep faith everywhere. Lastly, and still on the topic of being a pro-life state, for the first time, I'm calling on the legislature to end the death penalty in Louisiana. And I'm asking you to look at the death penalty here in our state in 2023 with fresh eyes and an open mind. In short, it's very difficult to administer. We've had one execution in 20 years. It's extremely expensive. Tens of millions of dollars more spent prosecuting these cases and defending these capital cases than would have otherwise been the case, and tens of million dollars more just maintaining death row in our prison system. And we all know our criminal justice system is far from perfect, but the death penalty is final. Over the same 20 years when we've executed one person, there have been six exonerations from death row and more than 50 reversals of sentences and/or convictions. Studies show it doesn't deter crime, and we know in 2023, the death penalty isn't necessary for public safety. And perhaps most importantly, it is wholly inconsistent with Louisiana's pro-life values as it quite literally by definition promotes a culture of death. For these reasons, I support Representative Kyle Green's bill to abolish the death penalty, and I'm asking you to do likewise. It is fitting that yesterday was Easter because faith and family are the most important things in my life, and I suspect that that is the same for each of you. I began this journey for governor shortly after losing my father, and I'll be ending it shortly after losing my mother. Everything... Everything that I am today is because of a rural sheriff and a charity hospital nurse who passed their faith to their eight children and taught them the meaning of public service. They showed me by example that faith should be followed by works. Those lessons stayed with me, and the scripture that resonates with me most is from Matthew 25. "For I was hungry, and you gave me something to eat; I was thirsty, and you gave me something to drink; I was a stranger, and you invited me in; I needed clothes, and you clothed me; I was sick, and you looked after me; I was in prison, and you came to visit me." Truly, I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me. In every decision that I've made as governor, from Medicaid expansion to criminal justice reform to the uncharted territory of the COVID-19 response, I have tried very hard to be a Matthew 25 governor, to be a good and faithful servant, not just to God, but to the people of Louisiana. So my final request to you is this. Let's all strive to be good and faithful servants this session and for the remainder of this term. Let's put our brothers and sisters above ourselves. Let's look out for those who are less fortunate. Let's turn words into actions. Serving this state, this state that I so dearly love, has been the honor of a lifetime. And with all my heart, thank you, Louisiana, and may God bless you all, and may God bless the great state of Louisiana.